Good evening.
Man, that's a rowdy crowd.
I'm telling you. Welcome to the September the 12th Board of Commissioners meeting. And those who would like to join me. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you, Father, for this opportunity to come together as a free people. Father, please forgive us with all the beauty that you bestow upon us. The things we can look around and see with our own eyes that sometime the flesh gets in the way and we tend to see the ugliness that surrounds us. Father, please grant us the wisdom, the strength, and the guidance to move forward and conduct the business of the people in a way that will enhance our citizens. I give thanks to you, Father, for this great country that you blessed us with and for this great county that we live in. For it is in his precious name I pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. We face this way because we have a flag at the back. We didn't like turning our back to you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, unstruck, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
About half of them turn around.
Anyway, you turn and you get a flag.
Yeah, we probably ought to move them up here somewhere, maybe.
Yeah.
Behind the TV.
Okay, we're gonna recognize any, anybody in the crowd we need, we see. I see Christie Joan with a school board here. Anybody else here that I can see? Okay, Ms. Harris, if you'd give us a little update on the bicentennial events?
If it's okay, I'm gonna recognize our folks that are here in the audience. We'll ask them all.
Is that what all these people here? I thought, Lord, what have we done now? Sounds great. Thank you.
I bet they won't stick around long after that.
They will either. That's why I put it on first.
I don't blame them.
If y'all will stand when I call your name or when I call the organization that you work with, we'd really appreciate it. The Davidson County Public Library System, Genealogy Local History Room at the Lexington Public Library, West Davidson Public Library, Holly Jones, and, okay, thank you, Davidson County Historical Museum, Davidson County Transportation and Drivers, who helped so much for all of our tours, Davidson County Parks and Recreation, the Speaker at Boone's Cave in the Western Tour, Davidson County Support Services and Print Shop, Davidson County Health Department, Davidson County Cooperative Extension, Davidson County Senior Services, the Town of Wahlburg, the Town of Denton, the Denton Museum, Friends of the Lexington Library, Friends of the Denton Public Library, Thomasville Tourism, Lexington Tourism, Uptown Lexington, Genealogical Society of Davidson County, Arts Davidson County, City of Lexington, Lexington Chamber of Commerce. This is from our Western Tour, Ferry Mills. She was a tour guide and a speaker. Churchland Baptist Church, Frances Seaford from Tyro Tavern, Ronnie Grigg, David and Jackie Sniffel, Dan Stamey and Stamey's Barbecue, Lee Crook, Yadkin River Park, Chris Watford Yadkin River Park. This is for the Southern Tour, Barbara Hogan. Some of our folks are doing double duty. Dewey Snyder, Kathy Cotrell in the Lick Creek Baptist Church, Denton Farm Park, The Village Restaurant, UHRI Real Estate, Chapel Hill Methodist Tabernacle. This is the Central Davidson Tour, Veronica, Tim, and Ming Kimmam, Jason and Stacy Heitman for Cook's Barbecue, Reverend Tammy Talbert and Henry Lancaster from Macedonia UMC, Von Briggs, George Smith and Jersey Baptist Church, Doug Beck, Beck's Reform Church, Glenda Everhart and Elizabeth Conrad with Hedrick's Grove UCC, Alia Henderson, Derek Bowers, Caleb Myers, the Lexington Tour, Reverend Arnetta Beverley, Tanya Lanier, and others at St. Stephen UMC, Joe Wallace and Grace Episcopal Church, Jerry and Evelyn Smith, the Cobal Dairy Program, Steve Hodges, the Lexington Furniture Program, Cecil Conrad, Barbecue Center Lunch and Program, Sandy Reynolds and the Friends of the Library. This is from the play, Jack Bolivue, Bonnie Byerly, Wendy Lurch, Jason Rowland, who was the director, writer, and an actor in the play, Tanya Hensley, who was a writer and a producer, Paul Byerly, Riley Brendel and her husband, Ashlyn Lurch, Midway United Methodist Church, Memorial United Methodist Church, Larry Farr and the Southern Theater and Event Center, Aspire Kids at Work, one of our JCPC programs, Tanya Lanier, Holly Jones, Reed's Elementary, Anita Rowland, Ginger Bitterman, the Hot Flash Players Performing Arts Company, Jim Gregory with Pace, Priscilla Oldacre with Thomasville Library, and then our bus drivers, we're gonna recognize them separately, Yvonne Stewart, Watts Parish, Chuck Nance.
May I speak up?
Please.
Chuck was with us for over ten years and he has ceased.
Yes.
But he did drive the first two tours.
He did, he did. Yes, yes. So we wanted to recognize him for that this evening, yes. Tamara Burlson, Rita Wingar, Bill Noonan, and I know Joy's here and she's irreplaceable over there at Transportation. But these folks have really done a yeoman's job over the past several months, making sure that things happened with the bicentennial thus forward. And we just thought it was important to bring them forward this evening to be recognized and thanked for what all they'd done.
Thank you, Debbie, for, you know, keeping us abreast of this. You know, when I see you folks out here, you know what the sad part is? Is across this county, a lot of our citizens don't know what you're doing. And that's sad because you guys are what makes the community what it is. It's what makes it all come together and all working. And I'm gonna tell you, you can have as many commissioners up here as you want, but they can't do anything without you guys. And I, from the bottom of my heart, not only as a commissioner, but as a citizen, I want to thank you for what you do and what you've contributed to this bicentennial. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Mr. Chairman, if you give me one more second, I'm gonna go through the folks that we have on the Bicentennial Committee. If any of them are here, they can stand as well. Got Tanya Hensley, Joe Wallace with the Lexington Chamber, Paul Mitchell with the Yadkin River Park and one of our historians, Caitlin William Coles with the Library System and Museum, Stephen Harris with the Library System and Museum, Dewey Snyder with the Library System and Genealogy, Guy Cornman, one of our historians, and our previous planning director, Cameron Marsden with Thomasville Tourism, Amanda Murphy with Arts Davidson County, Morgan Brookshire with Lexington Tourism, Paxton Taylor with Pace, Jim Gregory with Pace, Donna Smith with Wahlburg and the new curator of the Wall House in Wahlburg, Tisha Everhart Roberts with Senior Services, Richard Jones with Transportation, Zane Hedgecock with the Town of Wahlburg and one of our historians, Mike McAlpine with the Town of Midway, Reverend Arnetta Beverley was one of our church leaders and historians, Chris Watford, one of our historians, Barbara Hogan with the Town of Denton, Atalia Cardenas with Diversity and Outreach for the Group, Dr. Anitra Wells with Lexington City Schools, Tara Green with the City of Lexington, Kirsten Biggs with Davidson Davie Community College, Robin Bivins, Jacob Gordon, and Chris Phelps. This group has really worked hard over the past year or so to do the work that it's done. And we've had a lot of really good suggestions, a lot of good ideas. And we're looking forward to a couple of other things that we've got on the horizon. And if, Tanya, I'm gonna ask her to come forward and give you a brief update on the status of our last three tours.
Just keep your eye on that lady back there, that Arnetta Beverley.
I know, I know. She's a mover and a shaker.
Hey, that's one of the sweetest ladies I've ever had the pleasure to work with in my life. And that was, what, forty years ago, Arnetta? Man.
Good evening, gentlemen, and thank you for having me here. I wanted to give you an update on what is left as far as the bicentennial bus tours. We have three left. We have one this weekend at Abbott's Creek, Midway. We have one on the fifteenth of October that will be touring Thomasville City. And then the last one will be November the fifth, and that is the North Davidson area, including Freeburg and Yadkin College. And just to give you an update or to talk about the tours that we've done so far, we've had four tours. We've had over two hundred riders.
Wow.
And all of the buses have been full. And we have had wait lists, but we've been able to go through those wait lists and everyone's been able to ride. And then our play, we had five performances in the, two weeks in the middle of July. And averaging everyone that come, in the total, we had over five hundred people. And I did notice that there were more, some people attended more than one performance. And I just wanted to let y'all know about that. And we look forward to more bus tours in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanya has been amazing. She has put these, she has done a yeoman's job putting these bus tours together. I mean, between her and Dewey, I mean, what they've done to pull the historical aspects together and put these, the narratives that they've done. We're gonna, we're gonna make sure that as the tours are going, the narratives are being posted to the website so folks can actually go out and do these tours themselves on their own. So it's, and we're getting things to the schools so they can start working on putting our videos together of the photos that have been taken along with the narrative so we can have videos that we can upload as well.
That's great. Absolutely great.
Thank you all for being here this evening. And you don't have to stay if you don't want to.
Wait, wait a minute. Let's do the veterans first.
Okay.
We're gonna have Commissioner McClure, if you'd recognize the veterans.
Are there any veterans here? Raise your hand. If you have not got one of our pins and you're a veteran, how about coming up and we'll give you one? So I really appreciate your service. Thank you very much. I know that long time ago. Yep. Thank you, man.
Good job. Thank you.
Debbie.
Yes, sir.
Who's told them?
Arnetta told Ronnie I said hello.
Those plays that they, could be put on the, uh...
Oh, girl, don't, hey, you the preacher. You the preacher, my friend.
We will, we do have a link to the, it is on YouTube.
Everybody in the county can see.
It's on YouTube. Hopefully, they've uploaded it. If not, I'll make sure that it gets uploaded.
Okay.
And I, and the event that we're putting together for November out at the Fairgrounds, they're not gonna redo the whole play, but we're hoping to play the play during the day on a television. But they are gonna do a couple of scenes from the play out there at the event in November. So, because we've had, we've had, I know Cameron has asked because they, Thomasville wanted to see it played again. But at Reed's, they weren't able to do it because there was a water leak at the, at the school. And since they did not reschedule that one, they knew that they would, they would hear from it if they did not do that. But we've, we definitely got a good YouTube video of it and it was very well received.
You know, when you was talking there, I, I thought about our, the way we video our...
And they did, we, I've got a link to the video. I'll make sure that Caitlin's uploaded it to the site.
So then everybody in the county would have an opportunity to see.
And it'll be, and it'll be there forever.
Okay. If you haven't reserved for, to speak at the public address, please do so. Have a motion and second to, just to excuse Mr. Watford, Elliott, and Shores.
So move.
We got a second?
Yeah.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Adoption of agenda. Mr. Fry has requested that the closed session for attorney-client be removed from the agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Motion to adopt amended agenda.
Second.
Okay. Cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of four zero.
Is anyone registered to speak?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Public hearing. For Texas Incentive Grant was BL Makers Market Persuasive to Davis County Thomasville Downtown Commercial District Historic Preservation Program. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Martin, will you lead this off, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief. Blithe Leonard with BL Makers Market has requested a tax incentive from the county for work that was done at their facility in downtown Thomasville. This is part of the, as you probably recall, Thomasville has a program that mirrors the same as the county, which is designed to, as somebody comes in, they do development and they restore a building. You establish a baseline amount and then after it's been revouched, when all the work is completed, there is a, an incentive of the difference of that for a period of five years. Just to kind of give you a little bit of information, Ms. Leonard was unable to be here this evening. She's actually in the process of doing demo and renovation on additional facilities in downtown to do more businesses downtown. So she was not able to be here tonight, but the market kind of has a hodgepodge of a lot of things. Everything from candles to children's clothing to baby clothing to housewares, things like that. One thing that I know she's very proud of is that all of the products that are sold in that facility are made in the United States. Including the components within that, like, for example, with candles, the wick is made in the United States. The wax is made in the United States. Everything to put that together is made in the United States. So I know she's very proud of that and wanted to have that expressed. You should have in your packet a tax valuation calculation that I put together. You'll see the original valuation of the property was fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. As part of the renovation, they put a new roof on the facility, changed the stairs on the outside and on the inside, installed a handicap ramp. Basically, for the lack of better terms, they gutted the facility completely and did a complete renovation. According to 2022 valuation, it is now one hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine ninety. The tax collected on the original was three hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-three cents. Twenty-twenty-two, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. So the rebate is the, the incentive is the difference between that. The grand amount would be five hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-two cents. That's per year for five years. Total, grand total amount will be two thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents.
And this is something we went into, we reached back in twenty-twelve, if I understand correctly.
Yeah, it's about ten years old, the program.
Okay.
Which building is that?
Um, I have not personally been to this facility yet. It's...
On Gilfer?
Gilfer Street.
The big chair, the big chair loft.
And y'all may recall that was, there was a similar grant done for that last year.
I think Thomasville joins in, does the same thing.
Yes, and Thomasville actually approved this a year ago. They filed their application with them at that time.
All right. Thank you. If there's no other questions, anyone, any audience wish to speak either in favor of or in opposition? Okay. Is there any further discussion by the board? If not declared a public hearing closed, may have a motion second to either approve or deny the Texas Incentive as requested.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Cast your vote.
We gotta give these folks some incentives to bring these buildings up.
Public hearing, Project Hercules, I declare the public hearing.
Give me a second, sir.
Okay.
Get all the votes in. I have to get all my absences in.
All right.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of four zero.
Okay. Project Hercules, you know, development, building, reuse grant, I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Walter, will you leave this off, please, sir? Mr. Wofford, will you leave this off, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Project Hercules is an existing manufacturing company here in Davidson County. Uh, they currently employ a hundred and sixty-two employees. Uh, they're looking to expand their facility with, uh, twenty-one thousand square feet of additional manufacturing space, uh, invest nearly thirty-six million dollars in, 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 in the investment. Um, we have made an application, uh, on behalf of the county to the North Carolina Department of Commerce for three hundred thousand dollars for, um, building reuse to, to assist the company with those, uh, um, with their expansion. In return, the company has agreed to create forty-one additional jobs, new jobs, in the next two years, and an average wage of forty-five, forty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight, which exceeds the minimum wage standard for Davidson County. Um, the, the three hundred thousand dollar grant to the North Carolina Department of Commerce does require local match by the county of, of five percent, which in this case be fifteen thousand. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Right. Is there any questions?
Pretty good. Thirty-six million dollar investment, correct?
Yes.
If you need a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'll give you.
Matching grant come out of EDC.
Uh, it'd be five percent.
I mean, five percent.
It'll come out of our economic development funds. We'll bring it forward when the, when the grant award's done and completed. It already been done.
Uh, no, the, uh, the final approval by the Rural Infrastructure Authority Board in, in Raleigh should be October twenty-seventh.
Yeah, when we have that final paperwork, we'll bring it back forth for the appropriation. And thank you, Martin.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition? If there's no further discussion by the board, declare the public hearing closed. May I have a motion, Commissioner?
You already have my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of four zero.
Project JT, not development incentive grant. It needs to be continued till September the twenty-sixth. May I have a motion to continue this to September twenty-sixth and second?
I move.
Okay, cast your vote.
Who, who was the? Okay, thank you.
Resoning request, oh, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of you again.
We're gonna set a record here tonight. We're gonna set a record here tonight.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of four zero.
Resoning request by Chase and Taylor Wall in Silver Hill Township containing one point seven-seven plus acres from LI up to RA two, and declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook, we introduce the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners. Uh, we have a request tonight by Chase and Taylor Wall to rezone property in Silver Hill Township, stat map seven, a portion of lot four A, containing one point seven-seven acres more or less. Said property is located on the west side of Burkhardt Road, approximately thirty-five hundredths of a mile south of the John Young Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of LI Limited Industrial District to that of RA two Rural Agricultural District. Uh, very briefly. Helps if you cut it on. The area in yellow, if you'll refer to the map, is the area to be rezoned. This entire property was, was owned by Alaford, and in nineteen ninety-nine, it was rezoned from RA two to LI to accommodate Central Lumber Company, which is located on lot thirty. Um, since that time, the lumber company's closed down. And I think th- these are relatives of the owners of the lumber company, and they're wanting to build a house here. Came through the permitting process, found out we had limited industrial property, and we are in the process of trying to correct that for those folks so they can build their house.
Okay. All right.
Looks like a down zoning to me.
Yeah, down zoning.
Not an issue with it at all.
Is it pretty much as, as Mr. Crook has laid out?
Pretty much.
Absolutely.
Okay. You have anything else you want to add to it? Okay. Anyone in the audience who wish to speak in favor of or in opposition? All right.
Y'all just ready to get started, don't you?
Mr. Crook, what is staff recommendations to approve, correct?
Uh, we, we wish to approve and recommend based on the fact that it's contiguous to RA two and that the land development plan does support this application.
Okay. All right. No further discussion by the board. Declare the public hearing closed. May I have a motion and second to either approve or deny the resoning question to adopt the resolution or statement of consistency?
I'll make a motion we approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have, got a second? Cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of four zero.
Thank you. Resoning request by, um, by Terramore Development LLC in Lexington Township, containing plus forty-two acres from RS to RC. This item needs to be continued to September twenty-sixth. Do I have a motion to continue this to September twenty-sixth? And motion and second. Commissioner Tull, cast your vote. Are there any items to remove from consent agenda for discussion? Um, gentlemen, I'd like to, um, remove item HJ.
Mr. Chair, that vote carries by a vote of four zero.
Sorry, got ahead of you again. I knew you'd catch up.
Y'all are, y'all are out, you're out.
Item, item J.
The item J, the constitutional week.
That's the constitution.
Okay.
So, you're pulling that one?
I'm pulling that quickly. It won't take me a second, guys. Don't get all bent out.
Some reason. There we go, okay. We're good.
Okay. Wouldn't you go ahead and prove it?
Approve the rest of the consent agenda, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion second to approve the consent agenda? Cast your, a second?
Second.
Got it. Cast your vote. Yeah, the, the only reason I'm pulling this because I felt the need that this needs to be out in the open. I don't think we need to stick the constitutional way in, uh, the consent agenda. We have, uh, charters of freedom that were just completed. And every time I drove by there with the exception of once, there's been people up there reading those, those documents, Constitution, Bill Rights, and, uh, Declaration of Independence. And I just wanted to read this real quickly. It's not long. And we might move it. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition of this magnificent document in its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will be, which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas it is a privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the two-hundred-and-thirty-second anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the Davis County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week and urge all citizens of Davidson County to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves this the twelfth day of September twenty-two. Gentlemen, that's my, my motion to approve.
I'll say.
And we got a second. Cast your vote.
Who was the second?
Mr. Tull.
Who was the first?
Aye.
You.
I agree with you pulling that off. It's.
And I, and I told the chair, uh, a lot of times the folks don't ask for it to be on there. I put it on. But from here on out, this one will be on deliberation at every meeting, so. And all of these votes are in. And this motion carries by a vote of four zero. And the other, the remainder of the consent agenda also was four zero.
Okay. Out of decision information deliberation, we have proclamation Creek Week. I'm gonna ask Commissioner McClure if he would read this proclamation.
Thank you. Proclamation, September seventeenth through twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, as Creek Week in Davidson County. Whereas the Board Commissioners of Davidson County, as a representative public entity, acknowledges the importance of water quality and water supply as an essential resource for achieving and maintaining community health, economic stability, and long-term community prosperity. And whereas access to clean waterways, creeks, streams, rivers, and lakes for recreational, scenic, agricultural, and economic development purposes is a fundamental component of community life. And whereas Davidson County aspires to the continued help and economic welfare of its citizens who value clean water for domestic consumption, agricultural use, and as an industrial resource. And whereas Davidson County acknowledges the importance of good stewardship and proper management of water resources through thoughtful land development, deliberate and ongoing efforts to reduce sources of pollution and responsible consumption. And whereas TRIP and keep Davidson County beautiful, along with a variety of public agencies, advocates, advocacy groups, environmental educators, and citizens have organized and intend to implement a week-long celebration to promote water quality, conservation, and general awareness of the indispensable nature of clean water through education and proactive community engagement. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Davidson County does hereby adopt this proclamation recognizing Creek Week in Davidson County, North Carolina for the week of August seventeenth through twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, and encourages all citizens to participate in activities and programs to address the important issues impacting water quality and supply. Adopted this twelfth day of September twenty, twenty-two, and that will be in a motion.
We got a motion. Do I have a second to approve?
Second.
Cast your vote.
And all of those votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of four zero.
How you doing, Chris?
Great. How y'all this evening? Thank y'all very much for, uh, for making this proclamation. Thank y'all also very much for, um, all of your diligence in protecting our waterways. The zoning change ordinances, uh, as of late, uh, are all an extremely important part of protecting our waterways, and, and we appreciate what y'all are doing to support, uh, that effort, keep Davidson County beautiful. Mandy Kaiser's here with Keep Davidson County Beautiful, Douglas Holesman. Uh, wanna thank Lee Crook and the planning department, Guy Cornman, Thomas Marshburn, uh, TRIP board members. Thank y'all very much for, uh, for what y'all are doing to.
We just had a meeting, uh, right before this meeting, and all of our volunteers, so they appreciate y'all very much as well. And everything the county's doing to help us.
Well, thank y'all for what you did.
Appreciate it. Thanks for this. Hey, Mandy, thank you.
No, you all right? Get right there.
Now, ask Doug, give me that thing, man.
Okay, now we're ready. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, stay up, Chris.
Okay. Commissioner McClure?
Rain Brown and her group go out every third and clean the roads in Davidson County. I have seen the pile of garbage that they've gotten off of some of these roads. And it's there to be commended. They go out there regardless of how odd it is or anything else.
We were just with that, uh, that group. There was probably fifteen or twenty of us. Edgar Miller just walked in as well, so he's a, uh, a big part of Creek Week with the Yadkin River Keeper Organization, um, and as well as the leader of TRIP for, for many years. So, um, yeah, that, that group, uh, is absolutely amazing with, uh, with the effort they put in, week after week. Um, it's. And thank y'all for supporting and, and allowing us to, to have the, uh, resources to, for those folks to go out and do this work.
I think Kennedy. I think when they went on Kennedy Road, they had to go twice.
Yeah, it is. It, it, it's, um, it's amazing, but also embarrassing at the same time that, uh, we're having to deal with that.
Request, uh, next item is reg- request from TRIP to host Creek Week event at the Yadkin River Bridge. And Chris, let's use lead that.
This is the calendar of, uh, the events for Creek Week.
Thank you.
And we've got, uh, again, um, thanks to, um, to Mandy, she spearheads, and John, who really spearheaded most of the efforts for, for Keep Davidson County Beautiful. Edgar Miller as well, uh, for his leadership in, uh, organizing a lot of these events for Creek Week. Uh, as you can see, we got an action-packed week, so I hope, uh, hope you guys can, uh, and, and everyone here and, and the public can join us, uh, in celebrating our greatest natural resource and, and our greatest asset here in Davidson County is the Yadkin River and, and everything, uh, everything that flows into it. Um, what we're, uh, what we're, uh, here today to is, is, is ask for our closing events on Saturday, September twenty-fourth. Got a, an action-packed day full of events, um, that, uh, start with a little litter cleanup at about one. We have some live music. We're partnering with our friends over in the town of Spencer. They've got a five K coming from the Transportation Museum down to the Wilcox Bridge. We've got a kids' fun run. We've got a, um, sunset paddle out on the Yadkin River, which last year had about seventy people participate in. Um, again, we've got, um, live music from Grammy Award-winning bluegrass musicians coming out there this year. But what we're asking for permission to, for, uh, for today is to have some food trucks and some beverages out there. And just like our disc-off tournaments, we always come and ask y'all's permission to, to be able to serve, uh, some malt beverages and, and wine out at the county parks, as well as, um, as, as permission to have the food trucks out there. So, as part of the closing cer- ceremonies of, of this week full of, uh, folks coming out and volunteering their time to, to help make Davidson County a cleaner and, and, uh, and a better place to, uh, to live and visit.
Just need to make sure that our insurance policy is endorsed to cover.
Yes, sir. Uh, actually, um, our HR department, uh, spoke today with, with Walt Rouse, who provides our insurance, and I understand he provides insurance for TRIP also.
That is correct.
Walt said that we would, uh, that we'd need to secure an event liability policy and would have to identify Davidson County Government as a named insured for that. And so I, I appreciate you bringing that up, Commissioner, because, uh, I, I think that it's good to have that identified as an expectation of, of authorizing the event.
And, and our policy does include Davidson County. We have an additional, our, Davidson County's included as an additional insured for one million dollars on our policy.
Good enough.
Uh, do we, do we need to move on, on that? Because we're gonna have other events out there. So, if that's something we gonna have to have, don't we need to, do we need to make some action on that?
I think we're probably gonna look at who is the sponsoring organization and make sure that when these requests come through, that we're consistent in making that as an expectation here. Um, I just, forgive me, I was, I was, uh, just noting that it would be good for us to, uh, once we're finished here this evening, just to touch base and make sure we get together with Walt and that the language in there meets his expectations.
Okay. So, do you need any action from the board tonight, or just approve that them having their meeting on the twenty-fourth?
I think it was on for tonight for.
Approved.
Request to approve the request which Mr. Phelps is making for this event at the Yadkin River Park.
So, we good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I got a question, though. Uh, Chris. This Denton Fall Litter Sweep, how will that work down in Denton? I guess they're gonna have that at Harrison Park, so.
That's correct. That was a request we received late last week from the town manager and TRIP board member Scott Morris to assist with and be a part of Davidson County Creek Week.
So I guess people will just clean up, I mean, what's the intentions there to?
I think just to do a town-wide litter sweep. Yeah, we'll just, Keep Davidson County Beautiful will show up with our supplies, grabbers, trash bags, and just assist with their organized town cleanup.
And I guess the town will have something there for people to dispose the trash in?
To best of my knowledge, I don't have all those details, but I'm sure that they've got that ironed out on their end. Their request to us was just to be there and participate in Creek Week and for us to provide.
Thank you, that's all I needed, Mr. Chairman.
And that motion is approved by a vote of four zero.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Operation Green Light, Ms. Harris, will you lead this off, please?
Yes, sir, I will. This is a request by Commissioner Shores, and he spoke about it at one of our previous informational meetings. It is to kick off the initiative that was started at NACO this year that has now been embraced by the state and the NCAACC. They're hoping that it goes statewide. Let me get off of here, because I think there are dates that he was wanting. The resolution is that November seventh through November fourteenth be a time to salute and honor our service members and to encourage all of our citizens to. There's also gonna be a proclamation in October that furthers this along and requests that folks light up their buildings in green. And our support services staff is already working on ways to light up this building, the Colonial Drive School, the new courthouse, and the museum to light them all up green for the week of Veterans Week as part of Operation Green Light. I think there's some other initiatives that are being worked on, and I think it's gonna be something that's gonna grow as it moves forward. But this was one of the things that Commissioner Shores asked. We've already had several other counties reach out for the proclamation and resolution to likewise start adopting across the state. So his request was that you all approve it and direct me to send it out to all of our sister counties across the state.
There was, whenever this was announced in NACO, there were some initiatives to Lowe's and to somebody else, I don't remember what other one, to provide green lights. We gotten anything for that, so we can get green lights to the merchants or?
I can check in on that. So it was Lowe's, you think it was Lowe's and Home Depot? Would it have been Lowe's and Home Depot?
Might have been Home Depot.
Someone at the DNCAC should be able to answer that question for me, shouldn't they? Okay, I'll reach out to them tomorrow.
But they were gonna provide the lights so people didn't have to purchase them.
Okay, I will, I'll reach out.
Like Christmas lights, strings of lights, you just decorate them up?
Well, that are the, if you have porch lights to put the green lights in them.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
And I know that we're working on some type of light bars that we can actually put at the buildings that not only have green in them, I don't, there are many colors in them. So once the county purchases them, we can use them for Veterans Day, we can use them for Halloween, we can use them for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. There's other things that we can light up the buildings in colors of if you all would want to move forward, because I know that that was a discussion that we had when you all were talking about doing the remembrance for Ukraine.
Right, right.
That was being able to do some different things at the buildings. So they're looking into what can be done, but we know that our bigger buildings are the ones that we definitely want to make sure are lit up when we have events like this. But I was gonna ask Casey if we could speak with our department heads on Wednesday at our department head meeting to see if any of them have ideas of how that we can light some of the other buildings that we have up.
And those bars, you can choose the light, isn't there?
That's exactly, like the bars, you can choose the lights in them.
We did light up the courthouse.
We did, but we rented that equipment from Matt Hand. It was not something that was installed, it was just rented for that day. But they're actually purchasing some things now that we can use on the buildings that I don't know whether they will be permanently affixed, but they'll be out there if we need to use them for different events.
Okay, all right, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution and direct it be sent to all counties in the state with a request to adopt a similar resolution? We got a motion with Commissioner Tull, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second, cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of four zero.
Have a proposal winning designer for Yadkin River Park Environmental Center, Mr. Childers and Mr. Marshburn, will you come forward and lead us out on this, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. On July twentieth, I was tasked by Parks and Rec Department to enter into a qualifications-based selection process to identify a design firm for Yadkin River Park Environmental Center. Contacted seventeen firms, including required MWBE firms. We received only one response. I believe we went through this on the facilities committee meeting as well. The question arose about repeating the process. The grant administrator said, "You don't need to do that, we'll accept the one and go forward," assuming that they are successful in the paperwork, and they were. And I was thinking Dan was gonna be here today, have you spoken with Dan? I was thinking he was gonna be here today. Anywho, the fees for service are one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars and shall be paid by monthly pay applications. And with that, I have Mr. Thomas Marshburn to help answer any questions that you folks may have.
I think you can start off with the grant. What was it, a million and a half?
One point seven million.
One point seven million dollar grant, so.
I've got, I'm not sure how these are reading, okay? When you talk about debarment, what is that?
That is making sure that they have not crossed any state agency or federal agency.
Okay, where has Scott here responsive? And I'm not quick, because I know it's a good company, but I think for people to look at this, they need to understand what this means, okay?
Yes, sir.
Conflict of interest, you got, they've answered yes. So what is their conflict of interest?
They had their conflict of interest paperwork submitted, which means yes.
But it doesn't say that, it don't give a partial part of the story there, that's what I'm saying. When the public takes a look at this, they don't understand what this, this all looks bad to me. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Called estate debarment and suspension, yes.
That means they had the paperwork that was required.
Required for what?
They had to turn it in when they went through.
Were they suspended or not?
No, sir, they were not.
He's just saying they completed all, you gotta do a checklist of everything that they completed, their minority participation, their debarment, their everything you just mentioned.
Pass due taxes.
Yeah, so everything's there that they turned in their paperwork.
So you're good with all these yeses? I mean, I'm not, it may sound like I'm challenging, because I'm not. It's just that when I looked at this, it all looked bad to me, you know? When you get a yes answer on about everything, it don't look, you know, come in my door, this mess, I don't wanna see this mess, you know? So it's all good, I guess what I need to ask you, okay?
If it was not, we would not be here, I promise.
And you've been through this process too, it looks good to you, okay?
Yeah, you gotta turn it in.
So I'm fine with it, I just wanted to clear that up, because somebody, you know.
And that's a good clarification, I mean, for somebody, but yeah, they gotta turn all this in every time there's a bid, because they don't want any conflict of interest, and they don't want.
Things changes, time changes, right.
Okay.
So, we discussed this the other day in the facilities committee, so this is going, a new building out at Wilcox Bridge. This is also paving, curb and gutter work, I don't know if they'll do curb, but parking lot.
Well, it's not really curb and gutter, it's just paving the road coming into it and forty parking spots.
So I thought it was a little expensive for the size building that it was, but when all the ancillary items that they had to add, you can see where it adds up pretty quick to one point seven million, so. And there's gonna be a full-time attendant at the park once this gets built, so. I guess, you said there's three hundred a day comes in there? Thomas, right at three hundred a day?
Yeah, yeah.
So that park's really had good participation, so.
Well, I think, if I'm not correct, and if I'm wrong, but I think it's a low number.
It was, it went down, we've had a little vandalism lately.
Yeah, but I mean, we're on the low side of that right now because of the vandalism.
Around six hundred a day.
Yeah.
And you'll see it fluctuate throughout the year, but it stays constant right now at about three hundred, three fifty a day.
And I foresee that, you know, when Spencer, for example, gets the greenway from Barrow Whip, Train Museum, it's gonna be a regional draw. And I see it to be big, and I agree with Commissioner Yates on that.
And we also have the other grant we're gonna have to bring to you once we get the contract for the playground at Yadkin River Park. When you put that playground in, you're really gonna draw a lot of people, because that's sitting right on the side of the interstate where everybody will see it.
We've already.
Haven't seen them lately.
Okay, there's no other question, may I have a motion second to accept Ramsey Burgen Smith, architect of Salisbury, designer for the environmental center at a cost of one hundred and forty-one thousand? We got a motion, Commissioner Tull, gotta do it, have a second?
Second.
Gonna second Commissioner Yates.
Has new septic system and all too, right? I believe I remember, yeah.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of four zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a request to add four detention laws for Sheriff Simmons, will you come forward, please, sir?
Good evening, how y'all doing tonight?
Sure. How are you?
Thank y'all for hearing us on this. I've asked Major Billy Louie to come up with the numbers and some options, so I'll ask him to step up and present for us.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
If you would allow me, I've got some printouts here I can give you, so you can follow along, if that's okay?
Yeah, that'd be better.
Yeah, thank you. Got several here, so. Thanks. Thank you. Yeah, put them up there, put them in their box.
Y'all got a copy of this, Chip?
Yeah, sure. Well, I've got something in the agenda item, but I'm, thank you.
David, you got, you need a copy?
I need to get one, is there another extra? Thank you.
The Davidson County Sheriff's Office has been aggressively recruiting in a time that's been very challenging for law enforcement agencies across our nation. Finding those that express an interest and possess the skill sets is simply willing to put on a uniform and defend our country on a local level for a career has been a challenge, to say the least. Our desire at the Davidson County Sheriff's Office is to find qualified and eager recruits willing to work in an environment that has a high demand for professionalism despite the public scrutiny that haunts our profession. The surprising fact is that our agency is finding these recruits that desire to start a career with Davidson County. And this is being contributed to a couple of reasons, I'll just name a couple real quick. First, getting the starting salary to where it's competitive to other agencies in and around Davidson County has been a great help. We're very thankful to the Board of Commissioners for those salary increases. Although we must continue to be mindful and be competitive in the future concerning our salaries, being competitive gives us a leverage to hire quality employees for our future detention center. Secondly, we have found that offering the recruits an opportunity to TMBLT while continuing to work at the Davidson County Sheriff's Office has aided us in finding qualified applicants. We've been very blessed to see these men and women start their career with our agency, as well as others who are continuing their career with our agency in today's social climate. We must continue to aggressively pursue new recruits and be diligent in retaining those employees with Davidson County. As many of you see and read every day, our nation is still seeing an increase in criminal activity, including drug violations, substance abuse issues, mental health disorders, homelessness, domestic violence, shooting, sexual assaults, assaults on LEO, and general calls for service, to name a few. Once the suspects are apprehended and taken before the magistrate, they're often given a bond. This bond's purpose is to assure two things, one, the safety of the public, and secondly, the defendant's presence in court. Once the statutory duties of the sheriff, as you know, is handling and overseeing confinement of those that are arrested in order to be placed in confinement pending their court date or until they post a bond. The issues that our men and women are responding to on the street concerning these individuals oftentimes does not stop once the suspects are placed in the detention center. We're having to handle the same problems as it relates to substance abuse, assaults, mental health, and the lack of restraint, which results in assaults on officers and a response to resistance in dealing with those that have been arrested and placed within our detention center. This places a tremendous burden on our detention officers when dealing with those that have been arrested. These officers supervising those confined to our facility are continuing to see an increased workload that is very taxing both mentally and physically, day in and day out, to our eight detention officers on each squad. Those eight officers are responsible for those confined to our facility, and the detention officers are responsible for several things I've listed there. Booking the inmate into the facility, assessing the inmate's mental status to determine placement, inventorying the rest of his property and securing the property, monitoring the offender while detoxing from an impairing substance, placing inmate in their housing location, feeding the inmate three times a day, doing security scans two times an hour, which is state guidelines there, conducting security scans four times an hour while on suicide watch, and I noted here sometimes those suicide watches last three to seven days. Preparing and assisting inmates for court between the hours of nine AM to five PM, and transporting inmates to first appearances Monday through Friday at two o'clock. Transporting inmates to attorney visits and medical visits, responding to medical emergencies within the facility, assisting medical with med passes, assisting medical with diabetic sugar checks, preparing cleanup in each pod, and switching out sold linens. May I remind you, that is five pods in the new jail, several in the old. Assisting with deliveries, i.e. bread trucks, food trucks, laundry trucks, and et cetera. Distributing commissary and indigent packets to many indigent inmates. Headcounts performed three times a day. Responding to altercations between inmates within their confinement area, handling bonds and paperwork for processing the inmate out of the facility. Cell searches, which total of two minimum per shift. Operating a control tower, which is manned twenty-four seven for supervision and door access. Those items are just a few of our officers' job duties within our facility. Our officers are currently responsible for three hundred-plus inmates on a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-week basis. Before I came, I checked the numbers, and we're currently at three hundred and six. With an average of three hundred-plus inmates to eight officers, that's including lieutenant and sergeants, and that's boots on the ground. This results in a thirty-seven point five to one inmate-to-officer ratio. Needless to say, this is very unsafe to any officer, regardless of the detention center's structural makeup and design. With an officer-to-inmate ratio of thirty-seven point five to one, it goes without saying our officer's workload exceeds what is mentally and physically healthy for anyone in their position. Our officers are leaving at the end of their twelve-hour shift simply exhausted due to daily job duties from keeping state mandates concerning supervision of inmates and other various tasks that have already been mentioned. It's interesting to note that the surrounding county's inmate-to-officer ratio is far less than Davidson County. The numbers do not lie, the numbers below are as of September the tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and ours follows. Randolph currently houses two hundred and forty-eight inmates with a total maximum of four hundred and twenty-two. They have a number, eighteen officers allotted. Currently with that, the inmate count of two forty-eight, with the inmate, I'm sorry, the officers allotted, that is a ratio of thirteen point seven to one. And with a maximum housing to the eighteen allotted inmates would be inmate officer ratio of twenty-three point four to one. Irondale currently has three hundred and sixty-three with a maximum housing number of five hundred and two. They have allotted twenty-one officers, currently they have sixteen per squad. I was over there not too long ago, it was a couple weeks ago, was able to. I was over there not too long ago, it was a couple of weeks ago, was able to, it was actually last week, Randolph was a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, so we got some of them, these numbers from those folks. And currently, that inmate to officer ratio with sixteen per squad is seventeen point two to one. And with a maximum housing, uh, five hundred and two, it would be twenty-three point nine to one. Rowan currently has three hundred and ten, that's housed, with a maximum of three hundred and seventy. This was, your copies will note that it's unknown. I actually received those numbers just a few minutes ago, so I apologize for not having that on your copies. But that total maximum housed at Rowan is three hundred and seventy. Currently, they have, uh, seventeen officers allotted. They're down four to seven inmates, or I'm sorry, uh, officers per squad uh, with a ratio of twenty-three point eight to the current capacity. The maximum capacity, uh, it would be, I'm sorry, I apologize on backup here, on seventeen officers allotted for Rowan. If we look at the, uh, number of of, uh, four officers being down, that would give them a total of thirteen officers on a squad. That ratio would be twenty-three point eight. And then if they were down seven, obviously, it would be more. Guilford County, the current max is six twenty-five, uh, with a total max housed of one thousand twenty-eight. Officers allotted is fifty-five. The current average for Guilford County is thirty-five officers per squad. Gives an inmate officer ratio currently to seventeen point eight to one and maximum of eighteen point six to one. High Point Jail is currently at two hundred and ten with a max of two seventy-five. Officers allotted is sixteen. They currently average thirteen per squad, given a inmate to officer ratio currently at sixteen to sixteen point one to one, and then max seventeen point one to one. Versailles currently is housing seven hundred with a max of ten sixteen. Officers allotted per squad is forty-nine. Current average is thirty-seven per, uh, per squad due to the the vacancies. And that would be a current inmate officer ratio of twenty point seven to one and a maximum eighteen point nine to one. Davidson County now, if you look at the current is, as I've said, is three hundred. We have seen it as high as three fourteen. Number of officers allotted is eight. Current inmate to officer ratio now with eight officers to three hundred inmates is thirty-seven point five to one. The maximum three fourteen to eight officers is a ratio of thirty-nine point two to one. As all of you may know, we experienced a shortage in our detention staff several months ago. Many things contributed to our shortage. Many vacancies came about for reasons that were simply beyond our control, such as workload, COVID concern, stress, maintaining strict guidelines concerning state mandates, and an outdated detention center. Not to mention burnout contributed to those vacancies as well. The burnout was due to a workload that's simply impossible or not possible to achieve day in and day out with a thirty-seven point five to one inmate to officer ratio. This would start the notorious snowball effect that causes multiple vacancies within any place of business. Despite the great offset of officer to inmate ratio, I'm excited to announce that Davidson County Sheriff's Offices field all of its allotted positions for the detention center. However, even with eight positions per squad filled, we're still seeing that our employees are burdened with the previously stated reasons. We're in need of additional officers alighting the workload on each squad. We feel this would help tremendously by bringing some much needed relief to our officers, and these four positions would allow them to reduce the inmate to officer ratio. In return, it would allow for better job performance, working in a safer environment to allow also for coverage on vacation days and callouts due to sicknesses, reducing the amount of overtime hours. And this is due to, uh, calling officers into work to fill, uh, in uh, for the allotted, uh, planned vacations and callouts due to sicknesses. This allows us to maintain operating standards in the jail. It also would allow for a gun carrying status officer to be placed on each squad. Uh, gun carrying officer could assist with the inmate transport to hospital for medical emergencies. It would decrease the times, uh, waiting on patrol officer to arrive and ride with EMS during a medical emergency. So to explain that a little bit further, whenever there's a medical emergency and EMS responds to the jail, uh, we don't currently have an officer to ride with EMS because you need a gun carrying officer to ride to provide safety for the EMS workers, and we have to call patrol squads in or a deputy in to ride with the EMS unit to the hospital. It also would be able to decrease the, uh, court's wait times on inmates from the jail to the courtroom. Uh, we're seeing a increase in times there because it's it's just hard to, uh, break away from what they're having to do to get the inmate, get them, uh, secured, and get to the courtrooms. Would be able to decrease the wait time for attorneys wishing to speak to inmates concerning their case. Each squad would be able to conduct more cell searches, which allows us to increase the safety to the officers. Currently, we attempt to conduct two cell searches per day to reduce the amount of contraband within the facility. This will also allow us to conduct, uh, cross-training in all areas of the detention center in preparation of the new jail. Right now, we currently are not able to cross-train because our officers are very taxed. It would allow the, uh, supervising lieutenant to roam and relieve officers for lunch breaks, which our officers are not currently getting because of the workload. I'll, I'll put a note here, if we add an additional, in case someone wanted to know, if we add an additional eight positions, a total of ten positions per squad, that would help offset the ratio to thirty to one. A ratio that obviously is still not in line with our surrounding counties. However, it would be a great help to our officers and our agency, allowing us to spread the workload out more evenly. I wanted to to close with this, and I'll I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. Finally, I want to, uh, make the board aware that there's talk amongst the the, uh, North Carolina Sheriff's Association proposing new legislature. Uh, the new proposal would require all sheriff's offices across the state to certify a newly hired detention officer before utilizing them in the detention center. The certification process takes approximately thirty days to complete. Uh, it could be more depending on the the, uh, what they decide to add to the curriculum. It's important to note that finding schools to enroll the detention officer in may take several months to do, depending when and where the school will be offered. If this legislature gets passed, it will in return create more restraints upon the sheriff's offices as well as creating greater delay in filling vacancies. Not to mention delaying the utilization of the new employee within the detention facility until they are certified. This process could take several months. In closing, I want to thank each and every one of the the members of the board here for hearing our position requests for these new positions. I ask you to please consider the safety and care of our officers who faithfully serve our county as you consider granting these much needed positions. Thank you. I'll be glad to entertain any questions that you may have.
When you, when you, uh, said new legislation requiring them to be certified before they go into the, yes. What is it now?
Right now, we have a year. Uh, the sheriffs have the power to hire certif- without certifying, to put them on the road. I would never do that, but it is very beneficial inside the detention center. You work alongside other jailers, so they get kind of on the job training, and then it gives us time, a year, to get them to a school. The schools are hard to find. Um, we've sent some as far as as Brunswick County to be certified where we found schools for ours. We've been so blessed, um, we've been able to hire a lot of people in a little bit of time. Um, we're we're using, uh, we've done a couple of videos. Uh, we got a, uh, a corporation that does a a very professional video for outside and inside. So we've been very, uh, blessed to get new people here. We've got people waiting to go to work for us. Uh, we've got a waiting list, and we haven't had that inside, in with the with the sheriff's office since I've been here. Uh, things are going very well, and, uh, we're continuing to recruit, and it's working.
You know, I I have one more question. I'm getting older and I forget a lot. Didn't we put some, didn't we move some people out of the jail into deputy positions or something?
Yes, yes, we did, Commissioner Trol, if I may add. Um, and I've looked at that. We currently have, um, several, as the sheriff's already, uh, alluded to, that we have several people that are interested in coming to work. And as of October the tenth, we will have those four civil positions filled. Uh, that still doesn't fix the problem in the jail with those that still wanting to come.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, if we had that problem in jail, why did we take some out of jail to do that?
That's a very good question, Commissioner Trol. We, that was not our position. That was a, uh, a decision that was made. Um, obviously, not by myself or any of us. Um, I I I think it was a a terrible move because you you can't fix a problem by moving vacancies to another area. And and when we get those positions filled, we we don't have anywhere else to bring anybody new in to to try to offset that inmate to officer ratio. And that's currently where we're at now. We we are full. Our our roster is full in the jail. And we're still seeing, uh, the need to have these additional officers. So I don't know why they were moved, Commissioner Trol. Um, I, that's the reason why we're having to come back before you and ask for four jail positions in the jail.
But we're also able to take these positions. We can send, send them to a night school, waiting for this year. We can send these guys to a night school so they work four hours at the community college, getting their BLT certification, and they work the rest of their time, their eight hours in the jail. So it it benefits us. That's why we need that year of being able to work before they are certified. And I'm going the sixteenth, or this Friday, I'm going to Cleveland County to fight for that, along with many, many sheriffs are coming, uh, to fight this, where we won't lose that year. It's taking a lot of power away from the sheriffs, and that's not what we need at this time. But that's such a great program to be able to do, is we can get the help in the jail, plus get our people filled, and we're filling outside positions as well. So we're we're benefiting and we're we're moving on. We're getting a lot of good laterals. We're getting new people in, and we're getting new people certified. We've got a school of, I think there's about twenty-two in the school, day school. We've got, uh, about fourteen starting in October for a BLT school inside at the community college. So we're, uh, our efforts are turning very successful, and we're starting to get, turn the curve. And, you know, where they, the defunding didn't scare me. Defunding of law enforcement, it's when you start de-dreaming these young people from coming out. And we had that for a short time, but we're starting to get them back now.
Okay, I got one more question then. Well, I'm, when you said that, you know, they can work four hours and go to school four hours, that type of thing. If you can't find a school for, uh, jailers, uh, working in jail, can you put those people in the regular BLT?
That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to, we get them to start. We put them in a night school if they're willing to do that. They go to school for four hours, then they come out. We also certify them in the jail in case we need them. Um, that way they're duly certified and they're more useful to us, and we're, there again, we're, it makes us stronger that we can do that. But it's what we do, and then we try to work them out and get new people coming in. It'd just be nice to have those extra four positions. That would give us nine per squad. And and, I mean, we could use more than that for the size jail we have. We're a large jail. Um, to put us in the right ratio that we need, we've got to have this.
You said a new legislation will prevent you from doing that, though, now?
No, it's not legislation. It's going to be through standards. Um, through the North Carolina standards, they're going to try to make the sheriff's standards, there's two. There's a CJ side.
Yeah.
And there's a sheriff's side. You know, I I think they're trying to put us together, and it's not a good thing. Um, we're not chiefs of police. We're sheriffs, and we have totally different jobs, and that's what we're trying to push. And we're trying to push that Friday. We're not going to just take this line down.
Yeah.
So it says the Sher- the Sheriff's Association is proposing this. So that, that's what I'm reading here, that.
Yeah, well, I don't think they're proposing it. I think it's been brought up by standards. Um, and we're going to go before the full commission Friday.
Because I would think you'd want to fight that, because that'd put more regulations on you guys to lose somebody for thirty days to go somewhere off for.
It's my stance. It's not all sheriff's stances, but, uh.
But but it says the Sher- the Sher- Sheriff's Association is proposing this new.
That that may have been a typo on my my behalf, Commissioner Yates, and I apologize.
Because that's what I was gonna say. I'd be like, look, I believe I'd be go, I'd fight this.
Yeah, we're, I'm I'm going Friday to do that very thing in Cleveland County, for sure. You're absolutely right.
Because, I mean, that's, it's hard enough to find help now, and if you gotta find a school to train them in thirty days.
And and the thing is too, Commissioner Yates, you bring up a good point. When you look at, um, there's a portion on here that I noted, even if we had eight additional officers. Um, and if we had those va- those positions there to fill, uh, we've got people now ready uh, that can fill those positions. Even if we didn't fill those other four positions till later, let's just say it was a total of eight. We're getting ahead of that proposal, should it pass, to where we can go ahead and get officers in there, ready to work, um, and then get them sent to school before that proposal, i- if it does pass. We have to remember, even if we allot eight positions, we're, it's not costing the county any more money until we fill those positions.
I I would sure hope it fails, and I don't know how the sheriff feels about this, but I would say the board could, uh, do a, uh, resolution proposing, uh, if the sheriff would like for us to, to send to our legislators opposing this new legislation.
Well, and again, I say it's not the lawmakers that's doing it. It's standards, uh, or bringing this, and it's, but it came off of, uh, off of a Senate Bill three hundred that that came about off of off of things that 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 has happened in other states, um.
So it's not legislation. They're just gonna try to tuck it in as a standard.
They're gonna tuck it in as a standard. But it wouldn't hurt. I am talking to our legislators and and getting their ear, and they're listening. They're listening to it.
I would definitely think that'd be something we could do a resolution on and send it on down to our legislators so they can look at the rulemakers and, uh.
Very much appreciated.
At least question those guys.
I think we need to do that. Just curious, you, I was understanding you transferred four people out of the jail into the courts.
Yes.
And whose decision? You said it wasn't your decision. Who made the decision that y'all had to do that?
It would have come from here, um, to move.
Let me, let me jump in. I'll just tell you how it started. So no jail positions were asked for by the sheriff's office in last year's budget. Bailiff positions were asked for. So we asked these folks here, would they be amenable to moving four positions into bailiff positions? So that's how we got here.
From the sheriff, from the jail?
Correct. Four vacant positions, because in total, the department has twenty-five vacant positions today. Well, they had that about a week and a half ago. So when there's twenty-five positions, I told the sheriff, I said, look, I'm not interested in standing in front of the board asking for more positions when we've got twenty-five total.
So you reclamsified.
We just moved them over, correct. But no jail positions were even asked for in the budget.
Well, that's cause I believe we currently started out with nine per per squad.
Well, another thing I'm I'm a little bit confused on, and I'm just looking at the, at our budget file, which may not be as completely up to date. I have thirty-one officers. And that's counting any officer that's one, two, or three, not anybody in the brass. So I don't know where eight's, I'm not even sure what that is.
That's per squad, I think you're telling.
That per squad or in total?
We have eight per squad. Now, that that number is boots on the ground, working in the jail on a particular squad. You also have, what you may be looking at is those that may be allotted for, uh, transportation or even administrative. I'm looking at boots on the ground working.
So how many officers does Randolph have? They have no, uh, note beside their eighteen.
They just have eighteen.
Allotted officers.
That is correct.
Working at one given time on a shift, they have eighteen officers working that are assigned to the jail.
That is, and that is their boots on the ground, working inside the jail, not counting the administrative portion. This this, these numbers does not include the administrative.
I got, no, my number doesn't either. So rather than break it down by squad, wouldn't it be easier just to tell me how many inmates you got in total and how many officers you got? So I can just divide the two numbers together and know. So I can just divide the two numbers together and know?
Sure. You said 31, is that correct?
I, 31, so out of three, out of 306 inmates, that's 10 per inmate. Or 10 per person. See, I don't know what the other counties are, I don't know what the squad-
Not 31 working at any one-
I understand that. But if we could do that, standardize that for the other numbers, then I'll know a little bit more about what I stand. Because now I've got to divide by an extra number, which is the number of squads. And that just adds another variable that I don't know how many squads there are.
There's four squads.
Okay.
There's four squads.
Is that four squads in each-
And there was currently nine on each squad that was assigned to work.
Is there four squads in each of the other counties?
Yes, I believe there is.
Because it'd have to be the same, so I mean-
That's what they were. It's pretty standard.
But to answer your question, Commissioner McClure, that's how we got here. Is bailiff was requested, and again, we have a total amount of vacancies of 25.
We've got two issues. We've got a larger courthouse that's requiring more bailiff now because it's bigger. We've redone it. And we're going to have a bigger jail. And, you know, you're not going to snap your finger and get these jailers in. So there's another issue for later on, is trying to get these jailers in here now. If we build this jail, we've got to manage.
What type certification does a bailiff have to have?
A bailiff has to be BLET certified.
So I take it that's kind of what you're doing? When they get out of BLET, they go to the jail? That's their first boot on the ground? Is that kind of the process?
That is correct, Mr. Yates. And what that does is gets them initiated with the-
Takes them ground up.
And gets them prepared for being on the road. Better prepares them is what we've learned. And that, and that process takes a little while.
You had mentioned that when you're, you're recruiting efforts, that you actually had a, a waiting list. A waiting list for what?
For the jail right now.
For the BLETs coming out of school, that's kind of what I took from it.
So currently-
They're ready to move to the jail.
They require them to work 60 working days if they've got no experience. That's our policy right now. They come in and work 60 working days straight out of BLET, once they're out, once they're certified. So against them, a hands-on type of thing, teaches them how to use their abilities to, to use their mind and their mouth to learn how to handle these prisoners in a, in a more controlled environment, and the people they're going to be dealing with.
That's our current standards, correct.
If, if this, if, if that's changed, that's going to hurt the sheriff. I don't understand how any sheriff would go for that.
Yeah. We, we currently, if I could add, we've got a interview board coming up. And we've got currently two for five applicants. Two of those is detention. That we could potentially put in the jail, but we have no spots. I want to go back to what Casey just mentioned as far as 31 to three, 300 inmates. We don't have 31 officers working at one time.
I've got a quick question for you.
That, that, hold on, I apologize one second. That, we got eight officers working.
But I've got a quick-
Twenty-four seven, what we got is eight officers working 12-hour shifts. And when you look at eight officers, boots on the ground in the jail, you're looking at a total inmate-to-officer ratio of 37.5. You can't, you can't say we got 31 officers working at one time.
No, I didn't say that. You're putting words in my mouth. But I do have a quick question for you.
You, you said it was 9.7, not 1.
I mean, in total, and if I, and you can do it either way. I can do it in total, or I can do this shift thing. But I've got a question for you. The first county's Randolph, he says 18 with no note. Does that mean 18 times four?
Yes.
So divide that, they've only got 248 inmates? So they've only averaging three inmates per staff person?
This is per squad.
So they've got 72 officers that work in Randolph County?
That is correct.
Yes, they have.
And we have 31.
That is correct. That's where we're at.
And so Iredale's got 21 times four.
That is correct, yes.
So they've got over 80 officers.
Sure. They're allotted that many.
For 363 inmates.
Yes.
We have to understand they have, they have more area to cover. And one, one reason Casey may be the reason for that allotment is because when you look at some of these jails, newer jails, because they're limited on their space, they have to go up. And when they go up, it increases the control location, as far as observing these pods to two officers per controlled tower.
Well, then four, adding four, which is the request in the agenda item, will do absolutely nothing to lower our ratio.
That's the reason why I-
I have to add like a multiple of that, like three times that amount.
I second that.
It would be nice.
Yes. That's the reason why I said even if we added eight positions-
Where would we find another 15 people?
Well, currently, it's a good question, Casey, because currently what we have is five, as I've already mentioned, that is set for interview board, and two of those is detention, and that's set for this Friday.
Well, the four civil positions that we moved in the budget are still vacant.
Yeah, I apologize to-
The, the four civil positions we moved in the budget are still vacant.
They will be filled as of October the 10th. We've already got, folks, actually, two of those four will be filled September the 26th, and the other two are looking to be fulfilled October the 10th. So those will be filled.
So by October or November, we should, instead of 25 department vacancies, we should have 15-ish?
We're getting down to about 14, yes, sir.
Yes. We currently have one, two, three, four, five that is looking at starting on September the 26th. We're in a great position because unlike other agencies, you know, we got people wanting to work for us.
We've got-
And that's the reason why I say we're blessed. We're very blessed to have, have this problem. I'm thankful I'm able to come to you and say, hey, we've got all the positions filled, and we need more positions though.
It looks like a pathway for you to get them in the door and then move them somewhere else, hopefully. I mean, I think that's what I'm seeing.
You do what you gotta do, the best you can. But we're getting good professional people, there, there are good folks coming in, we're getting laterals from other agencies are coming here, we're getting laterals from other, other detention centers too.
But we have to remember this, Commissioner Yates, and what we have to look at is the sheriff's primary responsibilities by statute. And that is the jail, covering the jail, courthouse, and civil process. And may I remind you, this is our jail to manage, but it's the county's. These are county employees that we have to look out for their safety. Okay? And, and that's the reason why I wanted to bring it to the commissioner's attention, that ratio is just, it's amazing when you look at the surrounding counties.
You only talk about one per shift.
Yes, sir. And Commissioner Shale, I would, I would stand here and I would love to argue eight to, to 12 positions more. And I would be glad to argue that position, and I'm prepared for that. But we've only been slotted this time for four positions. And that's the reason why I said if you would entertain more, it would bring the ratio down. As I noted there, there was a note there at the end, it says, note, if an additional eight positions were granted, and that would be a total of 10 posi- 10 positions, boots on the ground per squad, you're looking at bringing that inmate-to-officer ratio down to 30 to 1. That's still not even where the others are. But it does give our officers some relief.
But we can fill these four positions, and that's why we're coming, asking for four. I'd like to ask for four more after we do this.
I, I would say that we could fill eight positions. But we've got to have the positions there. And as I said, even if you grant us eight positions, it's not costing the county anything until we fill all those eight positions. If we can get ahead of this, this that's being proposed with the, with the sheriff's standards, I think we'd be in a better position as well.
So we moved the positions that were for the jail, we moved those positions to the court?
Correct.
That's correct.
So when you say you're full, you're full with the, with the positions that you have, but that's not with the positions that you transferred. If you had those positions back, you, you wouldn't, you, you wouldn't be shorting.
That's correct, Commissioner McClure. The thing is, and that would give us our nine officers per squad. However, you're shorting the bailiffs, which we asked for new bailiff positions. And that, and now we've, we've got those positions, those vacancies on the way as far as being filled, and they will be filled. Two of those bailiff positions will be filled by September the 26th, and the other two will be filled by October the 10th. So th- those are pretty much filled. We still have the problem being in the jail of, of having all the positions filled and needing more, needing more. And I would, I would respectfully argue that we need more than four. I would love and be just flattered if the board would grant eight positions, but however, we've, we've only slotted to ask for four.
Let's, let's take one bite at the apple. Let's, let's try the four. See what happens.
With courts not in session, do you use the bailiffs for anything else, or what do they do?
Yes. And, and the thing is, when the courts are not in session, Commissioner Trull, that is roughly, one time, it's a, there's a district court judges conference week, and then there's a clerk's conference week. I will say this, as the major over the jail and civil, and also coming up through the ranks, I was a sergeant over the bailiff division, handling the schedule. Right now, we currently are faced with the issue of having new, but more, needing more bailiffs is the reason why we asked for those four bailiff spots. And we're having to pull from various areas to fill the sheriff's statutory requirements of putting officers in the courts. We, if, if we can't continue to pull from one area and put it somewhere else when we just need these vacancies, so we can get them, or these spots, so we can get them filled.
And we continue to, if they have downtime, we pull them to serve papers, we pull them to do transports for involuntary commitments. We're prob-, I think we're second in the state for involuntary commitments. That we have to move, I personally, Labor Day, Sunday, before Labor Day, I took one person myself to, to Wilmington, because I didn't want to call him my, my guys off. We're working constantly, we have very little lag time. There's so many things that we do through the civil division and through the jail division. I mean, we're, we're a growing county.
We average, and this was last, and I apologize, I don't have the stats with me, but I do remember the, these stats from last June, July, and August, we averaged, averaged anywhere from 51 to 54 mental trips a month, or mental patient trips a month. So when you break that down, that's roughly almost two a day. That's what, that's what, so you, to answer your question, Commissioner McClure, when the courts go down and we no longer need those bailiffs there, they are used to help with mental transports and to help serve civil process. We are now coming out, and I hope that I can say this, and, and with confidence, we're coming out of COVID, and we're seeing the civil process numbers increase as a result of it now. So we're seeing another wave over on the civil process side that we, our officers are having to, to help with civil process. And because we have shortages with their, on the patrol side, our civil process guys are assisting with patrol calls as well. So it's, we're, we're utilizing those bailiffs, and we can definitely u- use those four positions there currently in the bailiff divisions, the reason why we asked for them. We don't need them pulled and put back in the jail, because we've got officers there that'll fill those positions, and we can use them. We need more positions in the jail.
What those commitments do is turn your patrol officer into civil officers.
Exactly.
Because they're forced to have to handle the civil papers where municipal police officers are not. And that's something that needed to be looked at a long time ago. You know, we're a growing county. It's a growing county, we're in a growing area as well. I mean, we're centering the state, and we're going to have more, we're going to need more things. We're trying to juggle it to get it done, and, and we're doing a good job at it. Just a lot of moving parts in within the sheriff's office, as you know, Commissioner Shale.
Casey, this is not going to increase the budget any, is it not? I mean, he's got empty positions already, so.
Well, unless you add four. If you add, yes.
I mean, does he not have four he can move to, to get these?
Yeah, those four, well, he's, he's saying that those civil positions are going to be filled. There's some investigator positions that have been open for a year or so. I mean, there's a variety of, there's four you can move. And then if the number's going to move down, then if, I mean, I'm glad they just said, I mean, by October, we should be, see a less number. Or November, we should see a lower number. Then I think once you get down to 10, 15, yes, for the department of their size, it's, it's time to talk about, there's no way around it to move anymore, if that makes sense. But we're still at the same amount of vacancies we had, but prior to doing the pay raise from a year and a half ago. We had 22 vacancies then, or 23, we got 25 now. So we did the big pay raise, and we've got more vacancies now than we had then.
We had a lot more retire, I mean, I had six last month retire. We're, we're here.
And part of that was supposed to help retain folks, so.
It's a continuing factor, it's an older generation. Every agency has that, because they go out 30 years. But, but we're going to be down to 14, and it's time to start talking.
Because it sounds like if we can, if we can look at those positions and reclassify some, I think you're on the right track by getting them to come out of BLET and go into the jail, and then trying to teach them there what they're seeing.
Exactly.
And put them on the road, you know?
Exactly.
So it can be, some of them will stay, some of them will go out on the road for you, you know?
But, but they're two different entities, a, a jailer and a BLET certified officer. But it is a great thing to, how we get them in there and get them through.
Don't matter how you get them there, if you just get them there.
The problem with that, Commissioner Yates, if I could mention, what you're doing, we're going to be back here in a couple months, asking for those positions back. If you would go ahead and grant those positions now, there's going to be less moving around, and we, we've got people to put in those positions. Let's, let's look at it. The, the county's growing. Out where I live in Churston, I just added 100 house development there off of Boons Cave Road. There's, the county's growing. So we're having to increase, our call volumes increase. And if we have officers that, and we've got some of those officers that are BLET, and one of them was a patrol, we've got to continue to have those vacancies, Commissioner Yates, to put those people there. If we move those positions from patrol or from CID that are currently vacant and put them in the jail, we're going to be right back here again in another month or two, asking for these four positions, because we're getting people to come to work here. And I just, I respectfully ask that you not move those positions, just grant the, those four positions in the jail, or even more.
Let us prove to you we can fill.
Well, you know, like I said earlier, I'm good at trying four, and that don't usually come for me like this, but I think that's a pathway to, to maybe hopefully get our sheriff's department staff back help. And we can try it. If it don't work, then we got next year, you know?
Well, you know, one thing the sheriff said, we're talking about standard and training when they changing all this stuff. We're not talking about the Sheriff's Association or Chief's Association. You can tell me lobby some of that, but training standards, it's hard to get anything passed in. If they say you're going to do this, you're going to do it.
Well, maybe enough of y'all can fight it, and-
Yeah, yes, sir. And we would appreciate that resolution if y'all would be-
You're, you're talking about the county's growing, and it is growing, but it is not growing fast. I think that the last map book that the NCCC put out, it's a little above 1% it grows on an annual basis, and projected it's about the same amount. So it's, fortunately, we're not one of the beach counties that's growing 17, 18% a year. But, but we do need to make sure that we keep what we've got. What, what, I don't really, and I'm not like Steve, I don't know the inner workings of all of this, but, but we had, at one time, we were fighting 350, 360 in that jail.
Well, there's over 400 when I come in, but it's a management process. I'm working with the DA to manage those numbers.
Right.
We've had to push them out too, you know? But, but we continue, you know, working that jail as a management. You know, I have, I have some great ideas of what's coming. I know my sheriff in Alamance County, Sheriff Terry Johnson, he's able to keep, because he's got room, when we get the room and the manpower, you know, he keeps 50 ICE prisoners. He gets, the federal government gives him eight positions and pays for them, and he gives them four vans a year for transport. And whether he keeps one or 50, he's making $140 per prisoner. There's ways, this is a business. It's a business. But we've got- But we've got to keep our people safe, we gotta keep our county safe from, from suits, anything like this that can come about when we're not, who are not manned to do what we do. Because we're held accountable, we do a very good job for you, and we manage it well. With what we've had, it'd be nice to have a little bit of relief off of it.
Right.
And with that being said, Casey, I would like for y'all, not that I don't trust your numbers or believe them, but I like to verify everything, so, I don't know, Casey, if you can call around and get us some more examples.
Yeah.
Have some staff to do that, but by these numbers, we're understaffed, for sure, you know?
Is that a motion, Commissioner Yates?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second to approve four positions? What's, what's the motion?
Motion to approve four positions.
Do you have a second?
This is just to approve four new positions, not reclassifying anything, correct?
Right. For the time being, and we'll look at it again in a year and see how this has helped the situation.
Okay, do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Okay, Steve, vote.
We've come this far, we can't stop trying now.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of four zero.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thanks for hearing us.
Thank you for the informed presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Shale.
I don't thank any of us, really, realize what that number was. And I think Commissioner Yates is right, I think we need to get an understanding, you know, whether our county managers, what the numbers are that surround us, I think that would be good too.
Thank you.
And, and may I remind this, and when we looking at this, this is, th- those numbers does not include administrative portion, that is just the boots on the ground.
Yeah.
And supervising those, those inmates. It's in those pods, in those control towers, in the feeding areas, having to serve those inmates, so.
How do we, um, how do we need to do this resolution, uh, for the latest leaders?
We need to draft something up, um-
To the sheriff's association?
Yeah, and it-
Can you work with, with the sheriff on that? And find out exactly what it is we need to, how we need to work that?
I'd say to, to standards, mate.
Yeah.
Cause there's not gonna go, it's gonna go to standards, have the delegation sign off on it. It's not going to, it's not going to the general assembly, you know what I'm saying? It's going to a different path. So that way, they, the standards folks see that we've got some folks in the general assembly signed it as well.
What to re, make the request of them to do a resolution?
Or we draft one, we sign it too, and we have them do it as well, where it's a joint effort.
You check, you work with the sheriff on that, can't you, find out exactly how that's-
Do you know the sheriffs that's gonna be opposing this, uh, cause it'd be nice if we could get this to, to their counties?
I, I know a few that's going in, uh, Randolph County, Nash County, Surrey County, um, just to mention a few that I've spoken to, uh, Iredale is against it, uh, Alamance, uh-
What, Sheriff Jones? Sheriff Jones in Alamance, so you say-
Sheriff Johnson.
You Johnson, I meant, yeah.
He's totally against this as well. Um, we're standing toe-to-toe on it.
The reason I say that, Debbie, maybe we can send a copy of our resolutions out to at least the counties, uh, we, we can send it out to all of them, you know? But at least-
I can, I can send y'all the letter that I sent, that I wrote to, uh, if y'all would like me to, I can, uh, I can send you a copy of that letter that I sent, and I also requested to be personally heard.
In effect, in effect, and I know-
Tool it into a resolution.
Yeah, that would help, cause then we could just take the letter and move the language over to a formal resolution.
In effect, and I know this is language, you know, just private, private terms, but you're doing, they're trying to do away with internships. Where do you get your best training from, experience?
Well, I've heard it said, you know, you wouldn't let a, someone that's not certified to fly a plane, but I sure would like someone sitting beside that pilot to learn what his tricks of the trade are while he, before he gets to go to school. What a great benefit it is.
Exactly. What are the, the folks that are for it, what do they see that as a benefit?
I've heard different things, you know, what I'm saying is a benefit, they see it as a negative, you know, just what I said, it was brought to my attention, um, by the, by the sheriff of Orange County. Um, you know, and, uh, we're, we're, we're talking, you know, we're, you know, we can disagree with each other, I don't agree with everything that every other sheriff says, but, but I'm gonna stand up for what I think's right.
Okay.
Well, that's another, what we can do.
Thank you.
Cause I think it's, I think it's a dumb idea.
It's a very good thing, uh, you helped us out tonight, I mean, that's, it's a step, it's a step. And as we move on, I appreciate y'all hearing us.
It's difficult enough to find help in today's time-
Yeah, yes.
-without adding any more of a burden on, you know? So, wherever you go to speak at, I mean, that's pretty much would be my topic, we can't hire them now, so how are we gonna hire them, uh?
Exactly.
We gotta add additional training to them, you know?
Exactly.
Not many people wants to go leave their family, they said thirty days, what I read was thirty days training, I mean, they gotta leave their family.
Correct.
And go train somewhere, more than likely.
And we sent one down to Brunswick County, it's, uh, it, it's a chore.
It's, uh, currently, I think, a hundred and eighty hours.
But you know, I know it's not our sheriff's department, cause we got a professional sheriff's department. Some of the sheriff's department brought some of this on theirself. And, and y'all know what I'm talking about.
Well, that's true, not-
They, they brought a lot of it on theirself, training standards.
There's, there's a lot of sheriffs that's not full now, I mean, the jail is a hurting spot.
No, but I mean, when you-
We have a, we have a, uh, we have something going on here, very special. Um, there's a lot of jails surrounding us that are short, shorthanded, we're able to fill.
No, what I'm, what I'm saying though, is, is now that you have to get them certified prior to work, and-
Yeah.
It used to not be that a way, and then some of the sheriff's departments, and some of the counties caused it.
Mm-hmm.
And you know what I'm talking about. It was, it was more, more political than anything else.
Mr. Yates, if I may add, in very clarity, those thirty days is typically a month to send an officer, and they're, they're Monday through Friday. Now, I don't wanna mislead the board in thinking that they're there seven days a week, they're there Monday through Friday, get to come home on Saturday or Sunday, but still, that's very-
Still a lot, you know, and you got family and small kids, and the wife's gotta take care of them while you're gone, and, uh, you know, and like Don said, we, we lose sight of, some sheriff's departments probably need that training because they're sending people out there that, that don't know how to do their job, but we feel confident here that our BLET guys are getting the training that they need on site, so, what's, and that's another thing, what's good for one county may not be good for the hundred counties, you know? And it sounds like the sheriff's association's just wanting to throw a blanket on all, uh, one hundred counties, so.
It's a standard.
If that makes sense, you know?
Not the association, right?
It's, it's, uh, sta, training standards. And there's two, there's the sheriff's standards and CJs for police departments and highway patrols. They're, and they're totally different jobs. I know well, I've worked for the city, I've worked for the state, and I've worked for the county. So, uh, it, it's a-